Hey Doug, how are you? Gee, where are the appetizers coming out? Gina, live on the, uh, folks, real quick, before we begin, just let me, this is my friendly reminder at the beginning. These mics up here, the mic up there, the mic there, and the mic on the back table there are live. So, anything that you say can and will be used against you. So, uh, just keep that in mind as you lean over to your wife and whisper something. It can be picked up by these mics, so be very careful about that. Alright, let's do this. One minute, alright? You have all the resolutions, but I can just work off of essentially this right here, right? Alright. Guys in the back, don't forget to hit that mic when you're, when you're speaking. And Bill and Dave, remember you're sharing that mic, and Rich and Jimmy are sharing that one.
We're good.
Alright. Alright. We're good? Alright, can everybody stand, please, for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Alright, I am going to begin by making a motion to open this month's November session of the Board of Trustees Business Meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, first order of business, because I think this room is gonna clear out very quickly here after this is done, because I know you guys are not here to see me. The trustees have to be here. So do the department heads, but you guys do not. Um, really thrilled that tonight, we're gonna get a chance to do something for somebody, I think, that has just an incredible connection to this community. Uh, when you talk about community policing, I think that's almost a topic that was invented for somebody like John Peña. Um, he was not born and raised here, he is a transplant. Um, but he is probably more Cornwall than, you know, than, than the most Cornwall of Cornwallians. So, tonight, we have the honor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to the Chief of Police, Steve Dixon, in a se- in a second. But to return to a hierarchy in our police department, I think that's been missing for a long time. Not having, um, a sergeant position, which I think is, you know, incredibly difficult for one person to run a department without mid-level management. And John has the temperament, he has the experience, he has a connection to the community. Um, and we're really just thrilled that we're gonna have another leader promoted through our ranks. So, without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Dixon for the, uh, for the process.
Good evening, everyone. Um, it's obvious how much John is respected and, and loved, uh, by the turnout this evening. I've known John probably just about twenty years. And just to reiterate what, uh, Mayor Galliano said. He's always been a very calm, personable person. Has a tremendous rapport with the community, community policing. I could tell you so many times when John's just come into work, just to follow up on something on his own time, whether it was something with the cars or something work-related. Just to help out and make the department run the best it could. And that always meant a lot to me. And I have nothing but respect for John. I, not only is he a work colleague, but he's also a friend of mine. And I think he's gonna be a great right-hand man to me. There's a lot of changes going on right now at the department. We're hiring a lot of new and young officers. And John's gonna be the one to help me out to get them all acclimated to the department. What we're gonna do first, if it's okay, I'd like to have the village clerk, G. Mahoney, do the formal swearing-in, as well as have John's dad present, um, with the Bible for, for John to put his hand on as he gets sworn in. Um, it's a pleasure also to have John's parents here, Jenny Peña, John Peña, and John's uncle as well, so. Mrs. Peña, Ms. Peña came down from upstate New York, quite a distance, so. It means a lot, uh, to us to have you present for John's swearing-in. So first, we'll have the village clerk do the swearing-in, and then right after that, we'll have the formal penning by, by John's mom.
Gina has to do a lot of things, not just keep me between the white lines, but run, you know, essentially make sure that the, the meeting is all set and ready to go, and she controls the cameras in the room. So, she's got a lot on her plate.
She's a multitasker.
Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you, John Peña, faithfully swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and faithfully discharge the beauty of this Sergeant to the cost of your ability?
I do.
Doesn't count unless you draw blood.
Looks good on you.
Before you speak, Johnny, I'm just Chief, if it's okay, I'm gonna just get each of the members of the board that wanna say something, is that okay? First of all, again, Johnny, twenty-two years here, you really embody what this community is about. And, uh, really, I think there's a lot of young kids that look up to you, and there's a lot of people here that, uh, live in the village or visit the village that are truly appreciative of how you represent us. So, continue to do it, and I know you will. And with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Mayor Kane for a couple of words.
Um, John, I think it's a testament, the amount of people showing up for your, for promotion, which is well deserved. When I see you on the street, um, several words come to mind are dependable, affable. You know, you're a gentleman, and, um, I don't, I can't think of a, a better officer to, uh, to have promoted and, and represent our village. So, congratulations, well deserved.
Trustee Conrad.
Uh, I actually known John, uh, before he was a police officer, uh, when he volun- The first time I met him was a volunteer umpire in the Little League. And so, we were probably arguing about something, but, uh, yeah, so he was, he's, he's been a, he's been a good volunteer, and then as a police department, he's been great. Um, working the overnight shift is not easy. I'm sure everybody in this room, uh, police officers have all done it at one time or another, and it's not easy. And we welcome him on days as a community member and someone who knows everybody. Uh, it's really nice to have him on days. And Johnny, congratulations on your promotion, you're well deserved.
Trustee Gaylord.
Well, at the end of the day, John is, you know, a true asset to our, uh, to our village. And he's, um, you know, very well respected, he's very well liked. Um, I know John personally is a friend, and, um, I'm really ecstatic, proud of you. And, um, again, he's a real pillar in our community, and that's, you know, what we need in this day and age.
Congratulations. And finally, trustee Brain.
Uh, I think there are few people in the room that every other person in the room would say is a friend of theirs. John Peña is the one that I can think of. Um, and I'll just say that I've known him for fifteen years. First, as a police officer responding to a skunk, uh, incident, uh, not long after we had moved in. But then, uh, every time I turned around at any kind of fundraising event, any kind of karaoke night at Two Alice's Coffee Lounge, uh, the New Year's Eve, uh, event, uh, basically, you turn around and John Peña is there supporting the community, and it's, uh, it's always a pleasure to see him. And, you know, no matter what shift he seems to be working, he seems to always be there when I go in for coffee in the morning. And, uh, I, I'd like to think that we've forged a friendship over the years, and thank you very much for your service and your, your support for the community. This is well deserved.
I wanna thank everybody that came tonight. First, I wanna give God the thanks. Have you safe, may be grounded, and humble. Through the years, I'm, there's all, I see all different people here. I wanna thank you again. My friend Tiffany, I've been twenty-seven years here, she always told me I have to be present. My friend Jill here that's sitting back here, she told me to be patient, over twenty years, and stuff like that. And through the years, I met a lot of people, they are friends and became family. Sue, James, Victoria, Arden, Janine, over twenty years, we've been here together. My idea is always the biggest thing about the village is safeguarding our residents, their family members, and those that come through the village. And I'm gonna keep doing that. And once again, I wanna thank you for being here. Josh, I wanna thank you for being here. And anybody in the back I can't see. And you guys from work and stuff like that, and you guys from the town. So, thanks again, God bless you, and let the work begin.
Hey, John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask everybody to sit just for a minute. Um, John, if you'll sit down right there, too. Um, this is not the normal public comment section where you get to scream at the mayor. That, that is coming. But I wanna give anybody that would like to take a minute or two to, uh, say something about Johnny Peña that's not on the board, I'd like to give them opportunity. Would anybody like to speak? Come on there, come on up here, officer. Just step up, just step up right there behind the microphone, John. Yeah, thanks, James.
Hi, everybody, I'm James Thomas. I live next to, uh, Two Alice's, that brick house, Virginia's old house. Thank you for selling me that. Uh, I'm a retired, um, New York City detective. And, uh, since day one, since I met John, I knew John was a real cop. And, uh, I don't think I've ever met another cop that has treated a community so well. And I've worked with a lot of cops. But John, you're at the top of your game, and, uh, coming from a former detective, we really appreciate it. My wife, my son, my whole family, everybody really appreciates it. So, thank you, and long overdue, I'm glad you got promoted.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Um, anybody else like to say a couple of words? Okay, come on, Artie. Retired Detective Twilliger.
Everybody knows me, he gave it away now. I worked with Johnny for twenty years, and he's right, we did become like family, we go away on vacation. Yes, yes, we seen you there. And, um, he, he really has become like family. Like I said, we do things together, um, and he's the only guy I can think of that we never, in twenty-some years, had a disagreement. The only guy, I can honestly say we've never had a disagreement in twenty-some years. And, um, I'm happy for him.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Brendan Coyne here. Pretty much, all the accolades have been said, but the, the thing that keeps up, coming up, is community. Everyone, I think, in the village knows John Peña. And so, I had the pleasure of working with you for, for ten years as mayor, and it was a pleasure. And as someone else said, dependable is another word that, uh, it belongs to you. Um, I know you'll do a wonderful job for us. Um, you're very well liked, as other people have said, and I wanna congratulate you.
Anyone else?
I will.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm his father. I'm so proud of him. I mean, John has been straight arrow since he was born. No problem, no difficulty, always in the faith also. And I, I'd just like to leave one scripture, it's not related, you know, but it's, it's related. Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life." And John has, uh, showed that to me, and I've showed it to him, and, uh, we've come a long way. And I'm very proud of him. I have other sons, I'm proud of them too, and they're doing well, everybody. Uh, one little guy told me one time, I called him, and you know how you get, uh, when you're a father, you get in your low times? And I asked him, you know, I'm sorry that I didn't do as, should I, you know, better? He said, "Dad, don't, don't, don't say that. I'm the man that I am." He sells cars. Matter of fact, we bought, I bought a car for him, he's bringing it up from Florida. And, uh, he said, "I'm the man that I am because you guided me to a church, and I listened, you know, to the word of God, and that kinda balanced my life, even though we lived in Brooklyn, it was tough there." But, uh, all my sons, uh, I can vouch for them, they're, they're, they're true, and, and all of them. I'm talking about all of them. But he's number one.
Mrs. Galliano.
I don't know how I'm gonna top that, but, um, we have been friends for twenty-seven years. In fact, when my twenty-five-year-old daughter, when I was in labor at Vassar Hospital, um, and around three o'clock in the morning, how many moms in the room? Fourteen hours of labor. Um, three AM, I said to the nurse, "Who's still awake in the, um, waiting room?" And they said, uh, they, she went out and she came back, she said, "Oh, your friend John is up, and he's still, uh, awake, awaiting the delivery of your, your daughter." Um, so, we had, we go back a long way, and it's not just personal, professionally. When I was an Assistant District Attorney, and I was, uh, had Cornwall Court, he was the consummate professional, uh, knew the law so well, and very rarely did I have to assist anything that, that he, uh, did, or decisions that he made. So, as a village, as a resident, as a friend, we're so lucky to have him, and so lucky to have him be our sergeant now.
Yes, mom, of course, we were waiting on you.
Um, I just wanna let everybody know that since Johnny was a little boy, he was always like the most, the best one. And still to today, I know how you guys, you guys count on him, I count on him too, because when I call him, he's right there. And if I text him, he'll call me right back, he won't even text me back, he calls me. And I'm glad that I could share him with the town, because I've always loved this town, and I love you.
Alright, does anybody else wanna make the rest of us bad sons feel even worse about ourselves? If, please, step forward.
Make me feel guilty if I don't come here. What everybody said a hundred times, but I love you, you're a brother, and you are the kindest man I have ever met.
Anyone else? Alright, well, here's what I'm gonna do, before I announce our, our newest sergeant, I'm gonna warn everybody that once we give him his final ovation on the way out of here, we are gonna begin our meeting here, it's gonna be like Route Canal with no Novocaine, so you're gonna wanna get as far away from here as possible, 'cause you'll have to hear me. So, um, without further ado, and once, once we bid Johnny a farewell on this, like I said, if people could just go ahead and move towards those exits, we'll wait about five minutes, and then we'll get started with our meeting. Without further ado, I'd like to present the newest sergeant in the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department, Mr. John Peña. Alright, thank you, folks. If you wanna stick around, you're more than welcome, but there's the exit if you wanna get, I, I figured. Don't trample each other on the way out.
The public comment, right, I don't need a motion for that.
No, we're gonna go right into the-
The public hearing. Oh, that's right, public comment is next. So, in the public hearing, I'm gonna work right off of this, right? I'm gonna read straight- Okay. Just say, according to text. Yeah, I guess I should.
Thank you. A pleasure to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Great guy. Okay, alright. Alright. Yep, okay. Alright, um, we've already opened up the meet, the meeting, so I am going to, I'm going to open up a public hearing shortly, that is designed to address a local law which amends Chapter 155-48 entitled, quote, "No Parking at Any Time," close quote, designating a no parking area on Churchill Street within the village of Cornwall on Hudson. Um, the purpose for this is because some residents had come to me on a section of Churchill Street between Spruce and Idlewild, and there were driveways there that were, um, having difficulty with the occupants and vehicles being able to get out safely on a very narrow street, especially during times of, uh, of heavy snowfall after we plowed. So, we've looked into this, um, and we are going to have a public hearing tonight on this proposed law. So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna make a motion to open up a public hearing designating the no parking area on Churchill Street within the village of Cornwall on Hudson. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If anybody would like to speak to this proposed law, they can step to the, uh, podium here. Speak into the microphone, state your name and your residence. Okay. Uh, without seeing anything further there, are there any board comments? Absent any board comments, um, I am going to close the public hearing with the understanding that the resolution to allow this no parking sign and this no parking area to be in place in our local law, that will be conducted during the resolution phase of the village business meeting. What's that? Oh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to the next phase is public comment. Anybody that has any public comment related to any matter they would like to bring before the board, we just asked the same, you step up to the podium and state your name and your residence, and you have three minutes to speak to the board. Yes, ma'am?
Is this public comment only on agenda items or on anything?
No, we do not, we do not have any restrictions. We have a public, uh, Carla, we have a public comment section at the beginning, we also have one at the end after the meeting, but you do, you can speak to whatever makes your heart content.
Thank you so much. My name is Carla Castillo, I live in the town, sixty-nine Hasbrook Avenue. And today, I'm here to formally present to the town board, um, a copy, an official- Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so used to, oh, sorry, I'm so used to talking before the town board. Um, to the village board, an official copy of the Cornwall Natural Resources Inventory. This is a project that we started, um, under former Mayor Coyne's, uh, leadership. And it is, it was recently, uh, actually, it's been completed for about a year, but it took a little bit to get it printed. So, this is a document that the village board has adopted and included as part of the town's comprehen- uh, the village's comprehensive plan. And it outlines all of the environmental resources that are located in the village, um, as well as the town. And, uh, it provides some information and guidance on how to preserve these natural resources. So, I want to thank, um, members of the village board who participated in this process. Um, most of you were actually present at the public input meetings, and so, and many of the people in the audience were as well. Um, it was a, a really fantastic collaborative, um, effort that was funded by the Hudson River Estuary Program, done in collaboration with the, uh, town and village of Blooming Grove and the town of Cornwall as well. So, I wanted to pass it on, and I will be reaching out soon to, um, we're gonna be putting together a list of where to distribute the balance of the copies, and we'll be looking for some input on that, because we want to equally distribute them between the town and the village.
Excellent, and, uh, and I'll just say this, for those of you that do not know, Ms. Castillo, she is, uh, the head of our CCAC, and I always get this wrong, the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council?
You got it.
I got it right that time, I normally say committee, but, um, I had the privilege, um, she's invited me to every meeting. Um, I've been to one of their meetings, and I was completely blown away with how efficient and effective, and, um, just really, uh, you're a force of nature. And really, it's kinda my go-to on anything involving, uh, conservation here. And, and she's also, she along with her husband Ted Warren, are also heavily invested time-wise in the River Sweep that we do once a year as part of Riverkeeper. So, on behalf of the village board, I thank you for your efforts, Carla.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for bringing up Riverkeeper Sweep, because last year, this year, we had the highest number of participants out of all of the sweep locations here, Cornwall, out of everywhere, up and down, you know, up to Troy. And I'm hoping that we can retain that, um, uh, that, that stature for next year, which is May seventh, I think, is when it is. So, thank you so much.
Excellent, thanks so much.
Can I ask Ms. Castillo a question?
Absolutely.
Did that, uh, number include New York City as well?
Yes, it did.
Just to be clear, the highest number of volunteers for the River Sweep-
Yeah.
From New York City to Troy-
Yes.
Was at Cornwall on Hudson.
Yes, but, so, so they look at the locate, they look at the locations by project site. So, there may have been like multiple project sites in New York City, but out of all of the project sites, we had the most, uh, the most participants at ninety, ninety-four or ninety-eight? Ninety-four, ninety-four, yeah.
Well, New York City's got eight point four million residents, and we have a robust thirteen thousand, so it looks like Cornwall turned out. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Carla. Alright, anybody else in the public comment section would like to speak to the board? No? Without hearing anything further, I am, I need to close it, right? No, I don't need to close that. Alright, I'm gonna move forward then, and I'm gonna make a motion to accept the October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one business meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'd also like to make a motion to accept the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one special meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. The Treasurers' Report, the Open Utility Bounces Report for the end of October reads as follows. Village Water Sewer Garbage and Penalties, four hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, I am going to make a motion to approve the November two thousand and twenty-one Warrant Number Eleven and Authorized Payment Including Prepaid Totalling eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and the rest of this, Gina, can I just enter as per document? Okay. Okay. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, everything will be entered as per document. I am going to note at the encouragement of the village clerk that the amount collected in village taxes through October 31st is $2,842,518.18. October 31st was the final day of tax collection. All unpaid taxes will be sent to the Orange County Commissioner of Finance in November. All right, moving on to the department reports. Regarding the building department, trustee Carnright, please.
Village of Cornwall on Hudson Building Department, report for October 2021. Building permits issued 18. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued 15. On-site inspections, 25. Violations, one. Stop work order, zero. Municipal searches, four. Solar panels, zero. Fire inspections, two. Egan Gershwin, Code Enforcement Department.
All right, our next department report is the fire department. I'm gonna refer that to Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, the October department report for the fire department, with respect to automatic alarms, there was one event, seven, seven medical events they responded to, two motor vehicle accidents, five fire prevention activities. They had two meetings, four drills, one work detail, and the Halloween detail, for a total of 23 events and a total amount of volunteer hours of a little bit over 237, 237 hours, excuse me. The chief notes that the rescue boat has been removed from the water and is in service on the trailer at the fire station. They've received new pagers that are gonna be issued. They've ordered 10 new portable radios, which will be issued to members based upon participation at alarms. Fire prevention lessons were provided to COH Elementary School, Butterhill Day School, and the village nursery school, and the Cub Scouts. And lastly, the chief notes that Charles Ton, ex-chief Charles Tonison was honored by the Orange County Executive, Steve Newhouse, for his 50 years of service as an active firefighter. And Chief Tonison received the Orange County Meritoria Service Award for first responders. Charlie is a shining example of the volunteer fire service for all to emulate. And that's it from Chief Trainer, thank you.
Chief, Assistant Chief, anything to add? Good? Okay. Moving on to the police department, trustee Brain.
The monthly Cornwall on Hudson Police Department report for October 1st through 31st, 2021, there were 364 total calls for service. There was one charge of a felony crime for forgery. Under misdemeanors and violations, there was one fraud, two criminal mischief, and one harassment or aggravated harassment. Under arrest, there was one arrest for misdemeanor. Vehicle and traffic, there were two personal injury accidents, nine property damage accidents, seven traffic summonses issued, 12 traffic warnings issued, four parking summonses issued, six traffic radar enforcement posts, oh, sorry, traffic enforcement posts, and two speed or radar sign postings. Under noncriminal activity, the police department assisted with, or responded to, one fire response call, two domestic incidents, three noise complaints, one suspicious vehicle call, one suspicious activity call, nine animal complaints, one disorderly adult call. And assisted other agencies, the town of Cornwall PD 11 times, EMS service 11 times, other agencies once, other police agencies once. They performed one welfare check. They assisted two citizens. And during the month of October, Cornwall on Hudson Police Department received a $1,140 grant funding award from the U.S. Department of Justice Vest Partnership Program for the purchase of future bulletproof vests for COH PD officers. Also during the month, the police department applied for approximately $4,022 in grant funding to the NRA for two Axon taser units and 223 caliber rifle training ammunition and shotgun rifle slug training ammunition for officers, and requested the COH Village Board resolve to change the COH PD officer work hours as part of a one-year pilot program agreement to the A-line tour shifting to 2,200 hours to 0,600 hours, the B-line tour from 0,600 to 1,400 hours, and the C-line shift from 1,400 hours till 2,200 hours to become effective December 1st, 2021. Respectfully, Chief Stephen E. Dixon. And that is the report.
Chief, thank you for the promotion ceremony tonight, and anything to add to the report that trustee Brain briefed?
Just that we had an in-house training, this is why it's the weekend of August 6th and 7th of this month, so I'm trusting Brain for recommending, bringing in Santa Hato Stewart, it was destruction, it was very well received, stuff that the whole team's got a lot out of it.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. Yes, sir.
Just a note on the report, there was the pilot, pilot project, is it wasn't?
Yes.
Was supposed to go, attempted to go into effect by December 1st, but I've been in discussions with council for the PBA, so that target date is gonna be pushed back, but we're in discussions now.
Understood. So, the, the PBA that requested the shift change is delaying the implementation of said shift change?
Through some other actions.
Understood. Okay. All right. Moving on to Department of Public Works, trustee Carnright.
Village of Cornwall on Hudson, Department of Public Works, October 2021. Trash collected for the month. Oh, okay, didn't have that for the month. Yard waste collected for the month, 100 tons. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties continues. Surmaine maintenance continues. Sweeping of streets, cleaning of ditch line on mountain area to improve drainage along roadways. Repairs and maintenance of village-owned vehicles. Assisted town with paver on Continental Road. Assisted village of Highland Falls with trucking for milling of roadways. Fall bulk pickup was completed the week of October 18th, preparing winter maintenance equipment for the season. Notes, new pickup has delivered, and we are waiting to install radio warning and morning lights. Lettering will be in service for the winter season. Dave Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
And I probably should've noted this at the beginning of the meeting, but Dave Halverson is out tonight. Spoke to him today, and he had an appointment tonight, so he is not here, but I was in contact with him today, so. Moving on to the water department, trustee Gaylord.
Okay, water department, village of Cornwall on Hudson, October 2021. Monthly production, 23,453,000 gallons, which gives us an average, daily average of 756,548 gallons. Samples, we collected 26 samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. Due to the consistent low-level detection of PFOA/PFOS and the non-detection of 1,4 dioxane at the Taylor Road wellfield, the Department of Health has reduced our required monitoring from quarterly to annual for this source of water supply. Routine water treatment operations for the month. Transmission and distribution, 77 utility markouts were completed. Water service line leak repaired by property owner at 53 Mountain Road and 282 Hudson Street. Replacement service line installed by property owner at 217 Main Street. Completed water shut-offs at 9 Wall Street, 16 Quaker Avenue, and 21 Second Street. Blacktoped leak sites, completed fall fire hydrant flushing schedule, installed snow flags on the fire hydrants, performed valve box maintenance in conjunction with Orange County DPW Main Street paving project. Meters, read commercial water meters, 15 final meter readings were required, six residential meeting water meters replaced, four meter transmitters replaced, two customer appointments completed. Property maintenance, completed routine outside property maintenance at all facilities, completed mowing at reservoir dams, installed new LED lighting, clear well at the blacktop, uh, Blackrock Water Treatment Plant. Other, findings of our recent health department noted that our annual unaccounted-for water loss has been reduced from 36.6% of our daily water production in 2020 to 17.32% for the current calendar year. This represents a 52% reduction in lost water. Respectfully submitted, Michael Trainer, Water Superintendent.
Mike, anything to add?
How many gallons is that, Mike?
On average, it was about 2 million gallons a month.
That's treated water.
Yep. I, I just do wanna, wanna note that our former water department foreman, Harry Marr, passed away earlier this month, and he served the village in excess of 30-plus years.
Wow. Where was he, where was he living when he passed?
Winter Haven, Florida.
All right. Also wanna note that the water department is in the process of replacing the fence along the property on Maple Avenue, the municipal building we have there that is a water department building. I saw you guys up there today, Mike, and I know you guys are working on that, but we have a cyclone fence that had basically aged out, and Mike's guys are gonna do the work on it themselves, but they should have that done this week, next week at the latest, weather dependent. Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're moving into the resolutions. I am very pleased to announce that the board is going to appoint someone from the community to the vacant, a vacant position on the Ethics Board. So, the Ethics Board is currently made up of Chairman Mike Ferraro and a board member, John Ross, and recently, Ms. Ann Fulton had asked if she could step down. It's a, it's a big loss. The Ethics Board is not one of our more exciting or sexy positions. It's to be incredibly important function for government, for oversight, and to make sure that government officials, appointees, and electeds stay within the white lines as far as what their duties and responsibilities are. So, without further ado, I have interviewed this person that is going to be replaced, replacing Ms. Fulton. I've also shared his resume with the rest of the board, and the board is in concurrence. So, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Mr. Bradley Lavali to the Ethics Board for a three-year term expiring on April 1st, 2024, subject to his being sworn in within 30 days of this appointment. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna note that he is filling a vacancy on the board, and he will, he will complete the term started by Ms. Fulton. So, without any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, the next resolution is adoption of local law number 6 of 2021, designate no parking areas on Churchill Street. Okay. Whereas the resolution was duly adopted by the village board of the village of Cornwall on Hudson on October 18th, 2021, scheduling a public hearing to be held, said government body, by said government body on November 15th, 2021, at 7:01 PM at the village of Cornwall on Hudson Village Hall, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law amending Chapter 155-48 of the village code to designate no parking areas on Churchill Street, and whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official newspaper of said village according to law, and whereas said public hearing was held on November 15th, 2021 at the village hall, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed law, and whereas pursuant to Part 617 of the Implementing Regulations of Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECCUR, the adoption of said proposed local law is an unlisted action under SECCUR, and whereas the village board of Cornwall on Hudson, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of said village to adopt said local law. Now therefore be it resolved, the village board finds, one, that the proposed local law is classified as an unlisted action under SECCUR, it has no significant adverse environmental impacts, and issues a negative declaration thereof or thereon. Number two, that the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the residents of the village and hereby adopts said local law, number six, number six of 2021 entitled, Churchill Street, No Parking. And finally, three, hereby directs that the village clerk enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the village of Cornwall on Hudson, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of New York. So, do you wanna, do we need to do a roll call, or can I just do it? So, I'm gonna make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on. The next resolution is for the part-time police officer appointment. The village board conducted an interview last Monday evening prior to its work session, and at that time, we interviewed a candidate by the name of Jonathan Kapsak, a longtime Cornwall resident, for the position of part-time police officer in the village of Cornwall on Hudson, at the hourly rate of pay as per the current PBA contract, and subject to the probationary requirement under said PBA contract or a six-month probation period, probation period imposed by the village board. Counselor, I think we determined that it could be anywhere between six months and 18 months?
You want me to amend the motion?
Yes.
Well, let's, why don't we have a discussion first? Because the, the language in, Jean, your draft minutes refers to the PBA contract. I, before the meeting, I checked the, the rules for the civil service in Orange County, and I have the, the general minimum number of weeks and the maximum. Is this language from something else, or is it actually from the PBA contract?
It was from our previous appointment.
So, why don't we leave it as stated, which is the probationary requirement under the PBA contract, or, it does say or, so it's either gonna be what's set in the PBA contract, or you can now, if you wanted it to be one year, which I think was the discussion?
Right, yes.
You can say, or, one year, if permissible under the PBA contract and the Orange County rules for the civil service.
You wanna amend it?
Sure.
All right. You're it?
I'll amend the emotion, I'll amend the motion to subject the employment of Jonathan Kapsak to one-year probation, probationary period pursuant to the PBA contract or under the Orange County Civil Service rules. And that's it.
That's it.
All right. All in favor?
All in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Okay. The next item of business for resolutions is a code enforcement officer appointment. We were, we were bailed out by the assistance of Benny Maggio, who had been a 10-year code enforcement, building, code enforcement officer and building inspector for the village of Cornwall on Hudson, who came back, kinda helped us out the last few months when Bill Horton stepped down to take another position in New Windsor. Ben is currently slated to move to Florida, and so he's doing some back and forth, but he is going to assist us until December 6th in the interim. We're going to pass a resolution tonight to hire part-time Mr. Manny Carmona, a resident of Spring Valley, for the position, and give him a couple of weeks, I think we have three weeks, to do some left seat, right seat cross-training with Mr. Maggio before he takes over officially on December 6th. So, I am going to make a motion appointing Manny Carmona as the part-time code enforcement officer at the rate of $34 per hour, and Joe, no probation period because it's a, he's a part-time employee, not subject to civil service. Okay? May I have a second?
Second.
All, any further discussion?
With Ben, I checked with Ben, and we did have an appointment agreement with him, so what I was just gonna say, yeah, I was just gonna say is that it's pursuant to the terms that you just had, with further terms to be reflected in an appointment agreement.
Good for me. Do, did we get a second?
Yep.
We had a second on the initial motion.
On the first one, so we need a second? I'll second the amended motion.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
That's on the amendment, aye.
Aye. All right.
And then discussion on the initial motion. I just wanted to insert a comment about the qualifications of Mr. Carmona. I believe it's 27 years he served as, as building inspector and code enforcement officer in the village of Nyack, or West Nyack? I forget which one, Nyack, and has retired from that position and will maintain part-time here and part-time in.
Spring Valley.
Spring Valley. Spring Valley. And based on his resume and his qualifications, it seems like an excellent choice as to the interview process.
Thank you, absolutely. Okay.
Did we vote on the motion?
We voted on the amendment and the motion.
Okay.
We did.
All right.
Okay. All right. Okay, so the next resolution is to set a time and place for a public hearing on proposed local law to override the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law, Section three C. I'm going to introduce this following resolution and move for its adoption. I need to read this, right, Gene? Okay. Whereas the Village Board is mindful that prudent fiscal decisions are one of the mainstays of good government, the Board is also mindful that certain essential services must be provided to the residents of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson. The Village Board desires to have the flexibility to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing two thousand and twenty-two that exceeds the real property, quote, tax levy limit, close quote, as defined by General Municipal Law, Section three C, if necessary to provide essential services. And whereas the Village Board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to consider overriding the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law, Section three C. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Village Board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law, hereafter referred to as the project, in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEER, and Part six one seven of the Regulations Implementing SEER, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and let it further resolved that the Village Board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SEER, and let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by the Village Board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law to override of the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law, Section three C. And to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accordance, in accord with SEER on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven oh one P. M. at the Village Hall located at three twenty-five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd also like to note as an aside that this year, the tax cap is currently one point zero zero four six percent, and the village does need this ability to override the tax cap only if necessary in order to provide essential services. All right, moving forward, Riverfest two thousand and twenty-two. I was privileged to be on a Zoom meeting, the first Zoom meeting of the upcoming Riverfest plenary month, and was very impressed with the way that the Riverfest Committee conducts their business. And what they're looking to do is for the Board to go ahead and establish a date for this. And so I'm going to make a motion to grant approval to hold the twenty-fifth Annual Riverfest Celebration on Sunday, June fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, which is the first Sunday in June, and also recognize at the same time that last year's Riverfest unfortunately was canceled due to the pandemic, so this will be the first time in two years that Riverfest will be conducted, and it will be conducted on Sunday, June fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, here's where we get into some meat and potatoes. So Mike, be ready for this. So the Water System Master Plan, actually, you're the next one, I'm sorry, the Water System Master Plan Engineer Proposal. One of the first things that this Board began to take a look at in April was a mechanism to assess our critical infrastructure. Infrastructure is an extremely exceedingly important thing. It's roads, highways, dams, water system, all those, the electric grid, all those things. The stuff that we control in the village in particular is we provide water to thirteen thousand residents between the town and the village. Our critical infrastructure is aging. Some of our piping, Mike, did we say nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty they were installed?
Eighteen ninety-five.
That's, so I'm off. I'm talking about the ones that we're doing up on Angola Road, but we have some that go back to the nineteenth century.
Correct.
So what we would like to do is, we would like for our engineers to assess our infrastructure, to look at the dams, and to look at our buried pipes, some of them that are not to code, a lot of them that are not to code, the mains are too small, or they're the wrong material, or the material is just depreciating and decaying and, and, and needs replacement. So we're looking to have our engineers put together essentially a, a master capital infrastructure improvement plan. I've discussed this with the, with the Board at length. It is something that we would be budgeting for next year. The Board is looking into the options of using ARA, American Recovery Act, funding. The village is in receipt of around three hundred and change, thousand dollars to that effect. We just have to determine the legalities of what we're able to use it for. Is it just for projects themselves, putting shovels in the ground, or can it be used for the action, actual plenary process? We're looking at a twenty-year plan. We're not going to be able to accomplish everything in the first year, but we would like to have a plan in place that future Boards then could operate off of, and as the facts on the grounds change, they can adjust and they can pivot off of it, but at least put a roadmap together to make sure that our, our infrastructure, we don't have some big implosion one year or a big failure where we're, we're paying a lot more money in an emergency capacity as opposed to doing these things sequentially. So that is what our plan is to do, and what I'm going to do tonight is I am going to propose a motion for eighty-eight thousand dollars to be allocated towards the engineering firm of Pentegaro and Deutsch, our village engineers, to put together a, I see Joe already reaching for the microphone. I see him reaching for the microphone, in order for a engineering proposal to be prepared for the village, and I'll turn and defer to the Deputy Mayor first.
So I'll just, I'll amend the motion.
Okay.
Okay. And it's, the, the, the contract is pursuant to a six-page contract, a proposal, excuse me, dated June tenth, two, twenty twenty-one, by Pentegaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers, on the amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand dollars, subject to the review and approval of council.
Yes, and you did ask me to mention that, and I failed to mention it.
I will, can I get a second on my amendment?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Any further discussion?
Excuse me? Any further discussion?
Just for the public's interest and benefit, having read the proposal earlier in this meeting, again, it's very comprehensive. It deals not just with reviews of the infrastructure, but it specifies the format and delivery of the findings, including diagrams, maps, plans, actual recommendations, even to the question of water rates and so on. So to me, it seems to be a very comprehensively designed proposal, and if, if it's the way I'm imagining it, having read this, then it will be very much well worth the, well worth the expenditure to allow us to have a good plan for our water going forward.
I will admit that when the number came in initially, I was stunned and had my breath taken away. Then I spoke to some colleagues in similar municipalities about similar plans that they had put together for capital improvements and infrastructure repairs, and I heard from all of them that this was a reasonable amount for what they were advocating they were going to do. And Trustee Conrad and myself had a conversation this morning to talk about whether we thought that the, the cost-benefit analysis here was worth making. That's a lot of money and was worth making that expenditure. And Dave, anything to add regarding?
No, I think it's pretty comprehensive, like Bill said. If you read the whole thing, it's, there's a lot in there.
All right. So we already got the second? Any other further discussion?
All in favor on the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Can you call the?
What do I need to do?
I'll vote on the.
On the, on the original resolution?
The amended motion, I guess on the whole.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to?
I think we're all done.
I do.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Just want to make sure.
All right, thank you.
You know, because, because the Deputy Mayor actually cut the mayor off, so there really wasn't an amended motion?
It was an emotion.
I just took it over.
It was, it was an add-on, but, but, but however, Gene, however you write it up, it's fine with me.
That's true, because I didn't say motion to amend, so you're right, I just cut you off and took over.
Yes, you did. All right, so moving on, next resolution is classifying Chestnut Street Water Main Replacement Project as a Type Two action pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEER, Section six one seven point five subdivision C. I'm going to introduce the following resolution, and I'm going to move for Board adoption. Whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson proposes to replace existing abandoned village-owned water main on Chestnut Street in the town of Cornwall, and whereas Title Six of the Near Code of Rules and Regulations, six NYCRR, Section six one seven point five under the state, under SEER, provides that certain actions identified in subdivision C of that section are not subject to environmental review under the environmental conservation law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby determines that the replacement of existing water main is a Type Two action in accordance with six NYCRR, Section six one seven point five C two, which constitutes, quote, "replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site," closed quote, and is therefore not subject to further review under six NYCRR, Part six one seven. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mike, anything to add to this before the questions come? No? Dave, go ahead.
In the first paragraph, you said abandoned water main.
Yeah, we, we have two water mains on there. One's a small two-inch main and the other's a four-inch main. They're both, the two-inch is basically abandoned, but it's still connected to the four-inch. So we're going to replace both the two-inch and the four-inch with a more current, larger diameter water main for that area.
And has the gas been done on that street?
I'm not sure of that. I can check into that, though.
I think it has. Okay, that's it for me.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now, okay, wait a minute, then this is the second one? Okay. Uh, resolution, the next resolution I'm going to propose authorize the Village of Cornwall and Hudson to fund the Chestnut Street Water Main Replacement Project pursuant to the requirements of an agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. I'm going to introduce the following resolution and ask the Board to adopt it. Whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson will have submitted a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIIA, funding application, honored before November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, requesting grant funding the amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the replacement of village-owned water main on Chestnut Street in the town of Cornwall, and whereas it is desirable in the public interest that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson participate in the aforementioned WIIA funding program, and whereas the WIIA program funds sixty percent of net eligible project costs for drinking water projects such as the replacement of water main, and whereas the WIIA program requires that the village develop a plan of finance appropriating funding for the remaining forty percent of the project costs, and whereas the village mayor is the chief fiscal officer for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson and has the authority to make expenditures on behalf of the village, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson authorizes the village mayor to sign the funding agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and any associated documents, and authorizes and appropriates a minimum of forty percent of the project cost for the replacement of the Chestnut Street water main. The sources of these funds shall be the Consolidated Water District Fund and/or bonds should additional financing be necessary. The maximum local contribution shall not exceed ninety-six thousand dollars based upon a total estimated maximum project cost of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So.
How many feet, Mike?
It's about six hundred feet, and, and we're, we're coordinating with the town of Cornwall. They're also going to be replacing the, the sidewalks on that street, which is over top of the water main, so it makes sense to do it all at once.
All right. Well, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, last on the, on the water-related items. Resolution classifying Mill Street Water Main Replacement Project as a Type Two action pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEER, Section six one seven point five, subdivision C. I'm going to introduce this resolution, I'm going to move for the Board to adopt it. Whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson proposes to replace existing abandoned village-owned water main on Mill Street in the town of Cornwall, and whereas Title Six of the Near Code of Rules and Regulations, Section six one seven point five, under SEER, provides that certain actions identified in subdivision C of that section are not subject to environmental review under the environmental conservation law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby determines that the replacement of existing water main is a Type Two action in accordance with six NYCRR, Section six one seven point five C two, which constitutes, quote, "replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site," closed quote, is therefore not subject to review under six NYCRR, Part six one seven. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Oh, I have one more water one then.
Right, one more for Mill Street.
I'm sorry, I sure do. All right, this is a resolution authorizing the Village of Cornwall and Hudson to fund the Mill Street Water Main Replacement Project pursuant to the requirements of an agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. I'm going to ask for the Board to move this for adoption. Whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson will have submitted a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, WIIA, funding application, honored before November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, requesting grant funding the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of village-owned water main on Mill Street in the town of Cornwall, and whereas it is desirable in the public interest that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson participate in the aforementioned WIIA funding program, and whereas the WIIA program funds sixty percent of net eligible project costs for drinking water projects such as the replacement of water main, and whereas the WIIA program requires that the village develop a plan for finance appropriating funding for the remaining forty percent of the project costs, and whereas the village mayor is the chief fiscal officer for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson and has the authority to make expenditures on behalf of the village, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson authorizes the village mayor to sign the funding agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and any associated documents, and authorizes and appropriates a minimum forty percent of the project cost for the replacement of the Mill Street water main. The source of these funds shall be the Consolidated Water District Fund and/or bonds should additional financing be necessary. The maximum local contribution shall not exceed ninety thousand dollars based upon a total estimated maximum project cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to annual supply bids. Okay, so the village clerk and treasurer, Gene Mahoney, has reported that a bid opening was held in the village office on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one regarding water treatment chemicals. Bids were received from Surpass Chemical Corporation and Slack Chemical Company Incorporated. I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Slack Chemical Company Incorporated, the low bidder, in the amounts received November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, in that same vein, for off-road diesel, Mirabito Energy Products was the sole bidder. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to award the bid to Mirabito Energy Products as the sole bidder in the amounts received November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, aluminum, aluminum, I'm assuming that's aluminum sludge removal circuit, services, bids were received from Wind River Environmental, doing business as Earth Care and T A M Enterprises. I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to TAM, T A M Enterprises, the low bidder, as per the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one bid, and may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, what is that service, alum removal or?
Mike?
Alum sludge removal.
Alum sludge from the Catskill Filtration Plant, and they also remove sludge from the Blackrock Filtration Plant from our backwash water there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I have, I think, some good news to, to share regarding the village zoning map. So our village zoning map has been in existence since nineteen seventy-seven. I was in the sixth grade. There have been only really one addition to it, which was a small piece of property zoned in the conservation zoning area south of nine W. But we finally got the map digitized, and it's a great job by our zoning board and our engineers, and I'd like to make that available for the public so they can see what is zoned, how it is zoned, because if there's any issues and zoning needs to be changed, it's a McGilla, but I'd like the public at least to know where things are in the village and how they are zoned. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt the map. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt the map of which no changes have been made of recent. It's been digitized and prepared by Pentagar and Deutsch Consulting Engineers PC as the official zoning map for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Joe, am I missing anything on that? Gene, am I missing anything? Trustees, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So look for that to be available on our village website. Okay, other business. I have been working closely with members of the board. And with, you're holding the microphone, Joe, I get nervous. What did, what did I do?
We've done a lot. Was there a resolution concerning the museum lease? It's coming up?
It's, yes, it's on here, but we can do it then.
Okay.
Yeah, regarding the lease agreement. That is going to be, you're right, that is going to be a resolution. And I was moving into other business. That interruption and interjection is well-founded, Joe. So let me give some background. So the Village of Cornwall and Hudson has not had an executed lease agreement with the Hudson Highland Nature Museum in over 11 years. One of our priorities on this board was to figure out a way for us to get to yes and for them to get to yes. Long story short, the museum has been around since 1962. The piece of property, the parcel, was gifted to us by the Stillman family. It was originally, the original arrangement was in 25-year lease agreements. The museum is in a much healthier place, I think, than it has been at other times, just like anything else. And they've expanded, they have property now that's owned by Ceni Hudson on Muser Drive in the town. But the property that is on the boulevard, we have been back and forth with them now for about three or four months. And I think due diligence on both sides. And we have come to terms in principle on a lease agreement that will be set out for five years with escalation clauses. And what I'm going to propose is a resolution for the board to allow me as the mayor to
Execute the lease.
Execute the lease.
Yeah, so.
Anything further I need to add to it?
Well, I have some notes. This happened, I think, after 5 o'clock this evening. So obviously I didn't have a chance to prepare a resolution. So I can read what I believe is the correct language for the resolution. Board can consider it and then vote on it.
Yep, let's do it.
All right, so whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson owns property within the village and the structures erected thereon, which is currently occupied by the Hudson Highland Nature Museum. And whereas the museum and its predecessors have leased the property for more than 50 years. And whereas the lease has expired and the village and the museum wish to enter into a new lease agreement, the terms of which have been recently negotiated. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the village board hereby designates itself as lead agency pursuant to 617.6b1 of the Seeker regulations because no other agencies have the authority to approve the lease agreement. And be it further resolved that the village board hereby classifies the action as a type two action under Seeker pursuant to Part 617.5(c)(32), and that no further environmental review under Seeker is required. And be it further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Hudson Highland Nature Museum.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Look forward to reporting back when everything is signed and executed. But we look forward to a long, 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 a continuing long-term relationship with the Hudson Highland Nature Museum. They truly provide a wonderful service. And I do want to highlight the fact that during the pandemic, they provided an invaluable service to parents whose children were not in school. And they were able to facilitate outdoor learning, which at the beginning of the pandemic was one of the only ways that you could get together a classroom full of kids and just did an amazing job. So look forward to reporting back on that. Thank you, Joe, thank you, board. Okay, Joe, any other resolutions? Madam Village Clerk, any other resolutions or are we good? Okay, moving on to other business. Draft policy of the police body worn cameras. We're getting closer. So the plan is for this to go into effect on January 1, and we are working diligently to do that. The village board has considered the general order. We've discussed it and how we want it implemented. Council has worked diligently with our police chief, who's really done yeoman's labor in cobbling together our plan for how we're going to. It's one thing to have body worn cameras. It's another thing to instruct our officers on how they're to be deployed, how they're to be used, and what our own processes, protocols, and procedures are. So I know the chief has gathered several other local municipalities. New Windsor's one tuxedo, I think. And council is currently reviewing those and seeing we're going to do a best practices. So we're going to take pieces of them that relate well, because you've got to kind of tailor it to Cornwall. But we're in the process. And the plan is, as I've been saying from the beginning, to implement this by January 1 and to make this announcement and for the board to approve via resolution the general orders related to the rollout of the body worn cameras at the December business meeting. Did I cover everything there, guys? Chief? Good. All right, moving on. Donahue Farm Steering Committee. Okay, this is where I'm going to, since I'm losing my voice yet again at one of these, I am going to happily hand this off to trustee Brain. Sir?
Thank you. We most recently met on October 26 here and discussed a variety of initiatives that are ongoing toward coming together with a plan that we can present back to the village board for adoption sometime next year. Some of the interim activities that are happening are, the committee has finalized a survey, which is available here. I have a few copies if people want it and would like to fill it out. We're asking members of the public and people who use the farm property for recreation, anybody who's really got an interest or a stake to fill this out. It's a directional survey, which will be designed simply to allow the committee to understand how the village residents and other users of the property view it and how they would like it to be used. So that is now rolling. We're going to try to distribute it at every kind of municipal meeting that happens. We'll be giving it out at the Christmas tree lighting. We'll give it out everywhere we can. One of the committee members has volunteered to stand at the trailhead and hand it out to hikers who are coming up. So we'd like to get several hundred responses to that survey. So if anybody in the room hasn't filled it out, and that goes for everybody, grab it and we'll be distributing it online as well through the village website. Stabilizing the roofs. We are looking for a New York State-approved roofing vendor, somebody that we can hire after a bid or quote process. Bids, quotes, estimates. I think there's official terms for each of those, but we want to make sure that we're following all of the required law and requirements. So we're just looking for those vendors. And we're navigating the state approval list to find ones who are qualified to give us a quote. And members of the committee are handling that. The committee members are also working on a property history, a write-up with the village historian so that they can have that on hand for grant applications. That's a common piece of grant applications. The DPW is going to remove two mulberry trees near the ice house at the front side of the property. Mowing is TBD. The nature museum has given us some guidance on that. They mow their meadows on a rotating schedule. So it's not every year that they do it. And it's usually done around this time of year, end of October, beginning of November. But they do one and then they let that one sit. And I think they have four areas that they do on a rotation. Question of junk removal has been raised. And so we're either looking for estimates for that or the committee members are interfacing with Superintendent Halverson to discuss that and figure out what the best recommendation is to go forward with that. And then there's a social media page has been developed, the Facebook page, just called Donahue Farm. I think the Facebook address is Donahue Farm COH. You can go there and get some insight into what we're doing, some photographs, some videos, meeting dates, and so on. The next meeting has been pushed up. We ordinarily meet on the third Tuesday of the month. And, or is it the fourth Tuesday of the month?
Third.
Thank you. We're meeting tomorrow in this room at 6:30 PM. And at the last meeting, Ms. Castillo and Mr. Warren from the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council came and presented the, I know it. She beat me into submission a long time ago. And presented the NRI and the NHP to us and showed us the full-size maps, which are always a really great treat. People cluster around them and get in there. So it's great that we received that copy and that it'll be distributed to different places within the town and the village. I don't think I left anything out, but we have an advisory committee member here, Mr. Coin. If I've left anything out, I will yield a minute or so to you.
Do you have some sense of when we'll get a quote for this?
My hope is that we're going to firm up what the process to get that. We thought we had it and then it turned out that we could, the vendors, none of the vendors that we were able to identify are actually roofers. They're construction vendors, but they don't do roofing. So we need to recalibrate what we're looking for in the state list. But in the meantime, we're going to reach back out to the roofers who did provide quotes and see if any of them are on the state list and we just don't know. So hopefully Deke and Dave Work and Aaron Cousins tomorrow, we're going to like firm up what we're going to do there. So hopefully we'll get, we might even already have the quote in hand because we do have some quotes, but we weren't sure that they were qualified. So that's it. And it still looks beautiful down there. I still recommend everybody go down there and check it out.
And you're happy with where the signs are as far as warning people, you know, trying to keep people out of the buildings and letting people know it's obviously village property and everything. You're happy with the outlay and think we're covered in that regard?
If our attorneys and if the attorney for the village and our deputy mayor are happy from a liability perspective that we have posted the signs appropriately, then yes, I'm happy. They look aesthetically pleasing in the space. They're not.
I think I need to do, Bill brought up a good point during our attorney-client session before this meeting. I think I need to do a better job of communicating this. Maybe we should talk about how best to do it. This weekend, case in point, somebody reached out to me. Always easier to seek forgiveness than to get permission. And somebody planned a photo shoot down at the property. Now, none of us mind that, especially if it's a Cornwall resident. But there should be some mechanism in place for somebody, you know, doing something there, a photo shoot there. They need to go through the appropriate channels and that did not happen. Me getting a call halfway through going, hey, one of the police officers just said we probably should have let you know we're doing this, and that's what happened. So Bill, maybe that's something we put our heads together on. Or maybe you present to the committee tomorrow night and just say, hey, look, what is our mechanism? Because we need to get that word out. We can put it on the village website, we can put it on Facebook.
It's public property.
Public property.
It's just a question of usage. So I mean, you know, the plan.
This wasn't somebody just visiting, this was somebody going there and using it for a purpose.
Yeah, so they brought a little truck and they had, you know, props and they were taking nice photos. Local business person and, you know, known to all of us who stopped by and said hello.
They didn't go inside and.
Right.
No, and that was, that was my, that was my warning to them at the time was, please stay away from the buildings. The buildings are not structurally sound right now, so. And Bill, quick warning so you can let people know. Meeting's tomorrow at 6:30, right?
Yep.
I'll be here just at the beginning, just to say hello and to thank you because I see how hard they're working, I see them out at events, I see what they're putting forth. So I'll be here just to say a quick hello at the beginning of the meeting and then I'll get out of your hair.
Great.
I have one thing, I'm sorry. Tomorrow is also the planning board meeting.
Is that happening here in this room?
It's scheduled to be in this room at 7:00. So I don't, I think it will depend upon who has a larger crowd, who will be moved to our community room.
Very fine.
And who will stay back here.
All right, well, as long as there's room to be accommodated.
Work session room. It's called the community room?
Sometimes.
I learn something new every day. Yes, that is certainly available, but Bill, how many people are you going to have?
There are 12 people who regularly attend, I would say.
All right, you could probably do that in there. I mean, I defer to whatever jeans, how you work that out. But obviously that room, the community room will be available.
Sorry, I think the committee, in their interest to avoid Thanksgiving week, simply voted to have it a week earlier. We communicated that, but we didn't get the, we didn't get the.
Well, Mike, I believe the planning board for tomorrow night is canceled. I haven't received any applications. And I actually think I received an email that said there was no planning board meeting for tomorrow night.
Serendipity.
That's what I meant to say.
Serendipity.
And it was canceled.
Excellent, all right, good.
Just as to usage, you know, it's our intention to have the plan reflect what usage policies might exist, but obviously people want to use it right away. And we've already, you know, we're already started using it, so.
Yeah, I would think that, just like anything else, if it's just somebody, you know, a resident or a visitor wants to go see, there's nothing wrong. But if somebody's doing something business-related down there, we should probably have some policy or some permitting associated with it.
At the very least, notification that happens in advance.
Hundred percent, yes. Okay, all right, thank you for that, Bill. So moving on, sewer rates discussion. So I know that the village clerk slash treasurer is exceedingly excited about continuing to sit down with me and to work through my first budget as mayor. And my plan is to get this out to the village board by December. I think we decide, when we talked this morning, what date, target date do we set to give it to them so that it could be approved in January?
You want to give a first draft to them before the work session?
In December, which is December 13th, so.
Another one for the business meeting on the 20th, which.
An updated one by the business meeting and then.
You'll schedule your public hearing for January.
Okay, does that work for you, trustees?
What month is it typically adopted?
Has to be adopted before February 1st.
So January is, yeah.
Usually end of, toward the end of January, Bill.
All right, okay. So I mentioned that because the sewer rates discussion continues to be a piece of that. I would like to find or figure some way to reduce sewer rates, but I cannot do that until we see what's built out in the budget and where we are on things. So it is continuing to be taken under advisement. Now, I don't know what I'm more excited about, the fact that we have a lease agreement in principle with the Hudson Highland Nature Museum, the fact that we're getting the digitized zoning map uploaded onto the village website, or the Village of Cornwall and Hudson welcome sign. I've got some news. So I spoke to Mr. Boone out in Sugarloaf today. And Mr. Boone is putting the finishing touches on the backside of the sign. So the Cornwall and Hudson sign that was installed during Mayor Coin's tenure on the board here, we are having a sign put on the reverse of it by the same artist. It's going to be a different scene instead of the scene of the Hudson with, you know, Mount Beacon in the background and a boat. It's going to be done in the same style, but it's actually going to be the gazebo and the Hudson, that perspective of it, the village waterfront. So we will have it unveiling. He promises me that this will be installed before Thanksgiving. The target date is Monday or Tuesday of next week for the install. I will put it out on Facebook and on the village website. I'm going to certainly encourage any available trustee and anybody else that wants to come see it. The same guy that put in the original one is going to install this backside. So whether or not you're coming into our beautiful village or leaving our beautiful village, you will have something very beautiful and aesthetically pleasing to look at. That's the status of that. I'll keep everybody in the loop. And moving on, Joe, we covered the nature museum's lease agreement, correct?
Yes.
The Eagle Scout, the Mudna Creek watershed, Bill, help me out.
Intermunicipal.
Intermunicipal, council or committee?
Council.
Council. I've kept everybody abreast of the fact that we ended up having to move the Boy Scouts' original plan to put their educational or watershed informational kiosk down at the waterfront, but it was unfortunately blocking some views and obstructing views of even the gazebo. We've had it moved over. I spoke to Wayne today with Dave being absent. And our folks have actually dug the holes for the pilings. So it should be installed in the next week or so. There was some concern that once the permafrost layer kicked in, it was going to be hard to drive those pilings in. But we've gotten that done on our end. And any installation of the poles will be supervised by our DPW folks because it is seated right next to a electrical panel. And I don't want any of the Boy Scouts to be electrocuted. So that is, that should be done in the next week or so. But we've, we broke ground, which is a big thing. Family Medical Leave Act request. We had a water department employee, now Gene, or counselor, tell me exactly how, again, I'm supposed to do this. We had an application for FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, request from a water department employee who needs to assist a family member and wanted to use FMLA. I reviewed the request. I had no issues or problems with it. I spoke to the board. I spoke to the Board about it. None of the members of the Board had issues or problems with it. I spoke to the superintendent of the Water Department, who had no issues or problem with it. And so tonight, are we passing a resolution, Jean, or Counselor? What am I doing to, and do I need to state employees' names to, I mean, does that have to be done?
I don't think it's, you only have a couple of people. No, you wouldn't, the Board's aware of who the subject matter is. The Board recently adopted some policies concerning FMLA. So as long as the Board is familiar with it and the Board wishes to approve it in accordance with, you know, the existing policy, just get, you know, consent from the Board.
And the Board agreed to this as long as the employees' absences were coordinated through their direct first line supervisor, which is Superintendent Trainer, and he will work it out with them. So.
Right, which I think is part of the policy that we adopted.
Yeah. So you're right. The employee handbook has been updated and approved. And now we just have to get, we have to get the unions on board. That's the next road to hoe. All right. So do I need to do a resolution there? That was just an FYI, correct?
Well, since you already did it, I mean, is the Board approving the request for family leave? You should do that so that it's on record.
Okay. When I do that, again, I do not have to state the employee's name in open session? I don't see a need to. I'm just saying.
I don't see a need to. Protect, I would prefer to protect the employee's privacy.
So a water department employee has appropriately applied for Family Medical Leave Act leave under the statute, the federal statute. It has been reviewed by the mayor. It has been reviewed by the water superintendent and has been reviewed by the Board, all in concurrence that it is reasonable. So I'd like to make a motion that the Board formally, formally approve this employee's FMLA request. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's that. Okay. FYI, we're closing in on the home stretch here. So you might have noticed that there were a lot of wooden stakes stuck around the village in common areas and on public property. A man on some private property. Barbara Gazda, a former village trustee and a former deputy mayor, has spearheaded this effort. And I am pleased to inform you that some 1,700 daffodil bulbs have been planted across our beautiful village. The Board approved Barbara's request, which was to help turn Cornwall and Hudson into even more of a destination spot in the spring by having early opening, early blooming strains of daffodils. And I'm not a horticulturist, so I, and I'm lacking in my flora and fauna here. But these come before the grass needs to be mowed. They blossom and they're planted in many different places, from the Bandstand to Cliffside Park, to the Triangle down on Bayview, out to 18, to up and down Hudson Street, to around Village Hall. So at Village Hall, we're going to keep the front manicured like a lawn should look. In the two islands on the side here, we're going to continue to keep those as wildflower beds. But you will notice, you will see in the spring that there will be daffodils added to that. So some 1,700 of them. I want to thank Virginia Scott, who helped out from the garden club, as well as a number of volunteers that showed up from the town and the village to help in digging and placing these bulbs. So keep your eyes peeled for the spring. It should be, it should be fun. Upcoming events, Interfaith Service on November 23rd. I've met with a number of faith leaders in this community and outside this community that are part of the Interfaith Service every year. Last year, unfortunately, the Interfaith Service was held remotely. I think that option is going to be available this year as well. But we're also doing it in person at Mountainville United Methodist Church. I will be there for this this year. I've never been to one of these and I'm looking forward to it. There are, Pastor Topliff is, who's in charge, or is the pastor at Mountainville United Methodist Church, is hosting it this year. And every faith you can possibly think of is being represented there. And he's got a very, he's got a robust schedule of events that are going to be accomplished at night. Also recently met with Pastor Callahan at the Cornwall Presbyterian Church. They've been working closely there with the Rural migrant ministries, who are currently leasing the Grail property. And I'm going to meet with the Grail property folks, the Rural migrant ministries, and Pastor Callahan in one of the next upcoming weeks to kind of see how the village can better work with our new neighbors there. And obviously, the Presbyterian Church had a long time relationship with the folks at the Grail and now with Rural migrant ministries. So I just want to see what the village can do to get connected with them and see what we can do to outreach to them. Thanksgiving, the Village offices will be closed on November 25th, which is a Thursday, and November 26th, which is a Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. The holiday tree lighting is going to happen this year again in the village and in the town on the same date. It's going to be on December 5th, but I am going to endeavor to coordinate, as we do every year, to make certain they don't happen exactly at the same time. And I'll tell you, one big reason is because the Joy of Family is going to be providing the music again, or part of the music, this year, and they do both events. So they've got to pack up all their sousaphones and trombones and head back down here to do the village after they do the town. So just follow the Village website and our Facebook page for more details on that. Volunteers from the Storm King Engine Company Number Two are planning to serve refreshments this year at the Bandstand property instead of inside the firehouse. So they'll actually be closer and more organically connected to the actual event where the tree lighting is going to be. All right. Stay tuned for more details on this as they arise. And a friendly reminder that Hanukkah this year begins earlier than most years. It begins on November 28th. And I know that we have a committee in this village, including one of our clerks up here in the front office, Suzanne Yarmus, and I think Mr. Brain, Trustee Brain, also participates in that. That will be assisting with the lighting of the eight days of lights on the menorah. So that will be out very soon. Our DPW folks are the ones that install it at the direction of the committee, and we'll make sure that that happens. That's that. That's that. This weekend, I was at the Hudson Island Nature Museum. They had a ribbon cutting for a wonderful covered pavilion that was donated by the Wilhelm family. If you have not been to the Hudson Island Nature Museum's Muser Drive property, you really need to go take a look at it. And if anybody's interested, I can certainly hook you up with Executive Director Tom Bregman, who will give you a personal tour of the location. But it is just, it's, especially now with the leaves changing, it is beautiful. All right. With that said, lastly, I am going to offer up an opportunity for public comment again. For anybody that might be interested, just please step up to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. And you have three minutes to address the Board. Sir?
Good evening. Brendan Coin, 13, Paul Court. Just three items. Want to congratulate Mike on continuing to conserve water in the village. It saves the village a lot of money and saves residents' money. And he's been doing a great job. We've been going down on the need for water, and I congratulate you on that. I want to comment on the natural resources inventory that Carla brought up tonight. And thank you for the book, Carla. We have here in the town and in the village a tremendous interest in the environment, preserving the environment. And when we were conducting the work for the inventory, we had wonderful crowds of people turn out to help us put it together. And it's something that I think both the town and the village, you note that there was a lot of discussion about things up in the town regarding the environment. It's something that we as Cornwallites, as village residents, need to keep in mind all the time. We have wonderful environmental icons here in the mountain, across the river. And it's up to us to preserve them. And finally, we had our wonderful Halloween celebration. Again, we had some rain, but the, I think, I think that the homeland section of the village perhaps is the most popular Halloween trick or treating place venue in the world. Hundreds of kids come there, and even after the rain, they came back. So it was great to see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right. With that said, I've only got, covered most of my things for your information. So I am just going to say two things and then I'm going to turn it over to the Board. One is, I want to congratulate Jean for having her daughter get married this weekend. Very, very, very wonderful wedding. And I also want to thank this Board because this Board deals with me on a daily basis. And I know that's not always the easiest thing when you have, when you have day jobs that I deal with you like that. But I truly appreciate it. This Board has really helped me out and been extremely collaborative and let the emperor knows when he's wearing invisible clothes. So I truly appreciate that. And with that, I will turn it over to Trustee Brain.
Oh, first, huh? I don't really have much to add. I was just going to say that as we enter the holiday season, I wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving, Happy Holidays of All Stripes. We'll be together before the end of the year. But it's a really exciting and fun time ordinarily in Cornwall and Hudson. And hopefully, this year, we'll be feeling a little bit more back to normal. With, you know, with luck, we'll keep watching the pandemic recede. But I would urge everybody to use rational precautions when you gather. And I think we hopefully will, we'll have a really good, safe, healthy holiday season.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Gaylord?
I just want to piggyback on what Brendan said and just give a shout out to Mike and the Water Department because that 52% savings in lost water is huge.
Huge.
Really is. And it's a great job.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Cornwright?
Just congratulations again to Johnny. And I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the Cornwall School District will be host, the Chamber of Commerce will host a community forum on the proposed capital project, which is underway. I serve on the facilities committee for that. And I think it's an enlightening forum that certainly our business community should attend. It's at Munger at 6:30 tomorrow night. There's a huge chunk of that proposal that's being tossed around. There's $5 million, which is, equates into about $20 million with the state aid being what we have it. And there's different proposals for different schools. And it'll affect the business community. There's a proposal to send a big part of that project to the high school, which is out of town. And I think it's worth the business people definitely looking at.
All right. Anything else, Dave?
That's it for me.
All right. Deputy Mayor Kane?
I don't have anything. Everyone covered everything. So all good. Excellent.
Counselor?
No comments.
All good.
Well, let me just congratulate John Pena.
All right. I think he and his family are over at Rockwall right now. So if anyone wants to go over there, Johnny's always good for like half of a sip of a Mai Tai, and that's about it. So it will not be a crazy event, I can promise you. All right. Without further ado, I'm going to make a motion to close the November Village Board Business Meeting. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, folks. Jean, you're going to kill that. Keep in mind, the microphones are still hot. So.
Since I printed these, do you want to have them on here?
Yes, I'll keep them.
Hey, Bill, what if you do more than one?
More than one survey? Over time?
Matter.
Oh, fill out more than one?
No, it's not that. It's just, we want it to be accurate, right?
Just write something different each time so you don't count your vote twice, the same vote.